Good evening. November 9th, 2015, 7 o'clock. This is the regular meeting of Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Education. We start this meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I thank Mrs. Griffin for bringing in one of her students who's going to lead us in the pledge, Bryce.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Good evening. This is Bryce, fellows.
Fellows.
Fellows. I am nine years old and I'm in the fourth grade. I go to Elliott School and my teacher is Mrs. Forsythe. I play soccer and love to play outside. I love to do art and hope I'll get better. My goal in school is to be a better speller, get a high score on the NWEA testing, and my favorite subject is math and I love fractions.
Hey, Bryce.
I'd like to thank you, Bryce, for your participation at the Wayne Westland Board of Education meeting. And I would like to present this award to you, Mr. Bryce, fellows, for participating in the flag ceremony during the regular meeting of the Board of Education for the Wayne Westland Community Schools. Oh, sorry. Have you brought anybody with you today, Bryce?
Yeah.
Can you please stand?
Item 166.16, roll call, Mrs. Madell.
Mrs. Walker.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mrs. Madison.
Present.
I am here and Mr. Griffin is excused.
Okay. So we have six in attendance. Item 167.16, recognitions, presentations. Dr. Harmala?
Yes, thank you very much, President Buckeloo. We have three recognitions tonight and we'll start out with Principal Kevin Weber. I saw you from Wayne Memorial High School.
Board of Education, Dr. Harmala, thank you for allowing us to be with you this evening to honor one of our students. We have a student with us today named John Willett. John has excelled in the classroom, on the soccer field, the bowling, as well as in ROTC. And tonight, we're honoring him for an award he received over the summer for his outstanding accomplishments at the state competition. And so I'd like to invite Senator Kozowski.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm not a senator yet. I hope to be in about three years, so thank you. You know, first of all, my first question is, is I didn't even know he's a bowler. Is that right, a bowler? We have to go out bowling. What's your average? All right, we're equal, man. Very good. But, you know, one of the great things that I have to say is, at the Capitol, I have seen our ROTC program there, and they're the highlight of anybody I've seen there. It's amazing when these young adults are there representing our great school district. And I'm so happy to present this plaque to them and keep up the good work. We're amazed by what you're doing in district and we just hope that we can keep it going. And I'm very, very proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Thank you.
And next, I would like to invite to the podium our principal and director of Early Childhood Services in Stottlemyre, and that is Nancy Ely.
Good evening. I would like to invite Representative Bob Kozowski.
We're getting him. He's coming back.
And then Lowes, Christopher Muldoon, and then Adam Spader from Wimset Building Supplies. It doesn't look like he's there. Did you bring any Lowes heroes with you?
I brought actually one of our super managers, Mr. Ryan Herron.
On October 16th, the three groups provided $2,000 worth of playground updates to Stottlemyre Early Childhood Center in collaboration with our district's Career Tech and the building trades. They built a pavilion on the playground. With a lot of help from each of the groups, we had, all of the equipment was painted and... So we were able to paint all of our equipment in bright cheerful colors for the children, which really preserved a lot of the wood. And then especially the pavilion provides shade now for the children. We also planted trees around the perimeter of the playground, which will eventually provide a windbreak for the kids. So, thank you so much. Holliday.
Cheryl, we have certificates for them?
No.
Yeah, we do.
I never saw them.
Someone? Don't leave yet. Apparently, we need to get the certificate, so we'll be right back.
Okay. You mind if I say a few words about Lowes?
Nope.
You know, I was just at a coffee hour today. Yeah, and thank you, Mrs. Madell, for being there. But we talked about Lowes today, and it's ironic that we're here today on this because I didn't know anything about it. But Lowes has really stepped up to the plate on a lot of issues. When they contacted me about coming out there, I'm like, sure, I'm not a good painter, I'm not a good carpenter, but I'll come out. But even more, they took control of that area and I thought it turned out beautiful. But here's even a bigger one. This past weekend, there's 230 volunteers to make a senior smile. We're out raking leaves, and I know they're very generous in that. They had their Lowes heroes out there, and they do so much for the community. I'm not afraid to say it. It's between Lowes and that other one, go to Lowes, all right? Thank you.
Nancy will take care of your certificates momentarily, so please don't leave.
And while we're waiting for that, I'm going to invite Deputy Superintendent James Larson Schidler for the financial award.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Harmala. Tonight, I have the pleasure of forming the Board of Education. That district has received the 2013-14 Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association and the Association of School Boards Officials. This marks the 16th consecutive year the district has received both awards, making it one of only a few in the state of Michigan. I believe this award signifies the excellent work by staff throughout the district and individuals in the business office performing their jobs diligently. I especially want to recognize and thank Dave Callmire and Sue Rawson, both of who collect information and prepare reports for the audit and work with our auditors, Plant Moran, throughout the process.
Thank you.
Maybe we can pause for a moment and get caught up?
Gentlemen, can I have you...
Bob can come down, however.
Bob! We haven't seen each other enough today.
Yes.
Kozowski.
Yes.
Always put an L in there. I apologize. On behalf of my fellow trustees, myself, and Dr. Harmala, we would like to thank you and recognize you for your efforts in helping our preschool program over at Stottlemyre. And thank you very much for helping fill a need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
We're all set. Yep. Thank you very much.
Any comments? Any citizen comments?
Let's see.
Seeing none. Item 169.16, consent agenda.
Move to support the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion from Mrs. Walker, support Dr. Weaver. Discussion? And Mrs. Madell, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mr. Buckeloo?
I also vote yes. And that brings us to item 170.16, renewal and approval of human resources items. Ms. Bull?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. For your review and approval is a recommendation to appoint Ms. Kathleen Sedd to the position Director of Elementary Special Education. Ms. Sedd has 15 years' experience in the Wald Lake Consolidated Schools. She's been serving as a speech-language pathologist, a special services coordinator, and in her current position as a supervisor of special services. Kathy has a Bachelor of Science and Master of Arts degree in speech-language pathology, an education specialist degree in school administration and leadership, and she also has full approval from the Michigan Department of Education to be a supervisor of special education.
You need a motion?
So moved, report.
A motion from Mrs. Madison, support from Mrs. Hines. Discussion? Well, I took the opportunity of going through the resume for Ms. Hines, and I was totally impressed. Not just the education piece of it, but the teaching experiences, not only at the public school level, but at the university level. And then one thing that caught my attention down at the bottom was the training in reading, which is something that is going to be, I think, more and more an issue for us as the déjà vu. So, and that would be my comment. And others? Mrs. Madell, a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
I vote yes, and Mr. Buckeloo?
I also vote yes. And we have a 6-0 vote?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Dr. Harmala, would we invite her to say a word or two to us?
That would be just fine. Would you like to say something? We need to go to the podium. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank the board for approving me. I am extremely excited to come to work in Westland, Wayne Westland. I grew up in Westland, so that, for me, this is like coming home. And I just want to thank you. Glad to have you.
Item 171.16, renew and approval, business services and finance items. Mr. Larson Schidler.
Hey, thank you, President Buckeloo. Tonight, we have Plant Moran with us to present the audit. We have Jeff Higgins and Nate Troyer. I would like to say that, you know, our audit team works with us throughout the year, so it's not one time that they come in. We rely on them for input on financial transactions. They're very helpful to us throughout the year. And our auditors have also met with the finance committee and union representatives on November 3rd. So they are willing to come in, meet with groups that we ask them to do, and they do an excellent job working with our finance committee and the unions. So with that, I turn it over to Jeff. Thank you and good evening. As was mentioned, we're with Plant Moran. We're the district's independent auditors. And tonight, we'd like to review some of the financial highlights for the school district's year ended June 30th, 2015. Before getting into that, I did want to congratulate the district on receiving both the GFOA and the NASBO awards. As was mentioned, only a handful of districts across the state do receive those awards, and so it is certainly something that the district should be commended for. So congratulations on those accomplishments. There's three documents received with the board packets. The first one is the comprehensive annual financial report. That is the district's audited financial statement. The second is the federal awards supplemental information. That's our separate audit on the federal programs administered by the district. And finally, there's the reports to the Board of Education. This provides information on the audit process and results and is intended to provide more insight into the audit process itself. As the district's auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on these financial statements based on an audit conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. Certainly happy to report here tonight that based on our various tests and procedures, we've rendered an unmodified or clean opinion on the district's financial statements. This is the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can provide on a set of financial statements. And with that, we will touch upon some of the results of the June 30th, 2015 financials. Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, board. So starting off, the first slide I have here is the balance sheet of the fund level statements as of June 30, 2015. The general fund is the primary operating fund of the district and is really the focus of the presentation. I'm starting off, so we have cash, or I'm sorry, assets of approximately $25.3 million. Included in that total was $8.3 million of cash and investments and $16 million in state aid that was received in July and August, which is shown as the receivable at year end. Liabilities totaled approximately $21.8 million. Included in that was $13.3 million of accrued payroll and related liabilities for essentially wages and benefits earned prior to June 30th, not paid till after. And also, $4 million was outstanding on a line of credit, which related to a line of credit obtained in August of 2014, borrowings of up to $8 million, which matured in August of 2015. Assets minus liabilities gets you to fund balance, which totaled $3.4 million. That's then shown in a couple different categories. So non-spendable are amounts in non-spendable form, which was $14,000, which related to inventory on hand at year end. Assigned items are items that have been earmarked by management for a specific use or intended use. And so the $85,538 relates to the original June 30, 2016 operating budget. Revenues were under expenditures of, again, the $85,000. Unassigned items are anything that don't fall into the above categories, and that totaled $3.3 million at year end, again, for a combined fund balance of $3.4 million. The next slide shows the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance. For the general fund total revenue totaled approximately $101.7 million. Expenditures totaled approximately $103 million, or revenue under expenditures of $1.3 million. Other financing sources or essentially transfers in were approximately $1 million, or a net change in fund balance of a decrease of $296,000. When added to the beginning fund balance of $3.7 million, you again arrive at that $3.4 million. And when you subtract the non-spendable and assigned balances of approximately $99,000, you again arrive at the unassigned balance of $3.3. The next slide looks at the general fund budget to actual results. You can see that total revenue was budgeted at approximately $102.1 million. Actual results came in at $101.7 million for a variance of approximately $420,000 under budget. Total expenditures were budgeted at $103.3 million. Actual came in at approximately $103 million for a variance of approximately $260,000 under budget. The net variance or total variance was $123,000 positive. And two things to note there is that, one, the district's not allowed to spend more than what's been approved by the board, so that has, that number has to be positive. And two, when you compare that overall variance of $123,000 to total expenditures of $103 million, the variance is a 0.1% variance, which really speaks to the precision of that final budget for the year. This next slide looks at the impact of GASB 68 on the current year financial statements. So what is GASB 68? Well, GASB 68 requires school districts to report their share of the underfunded pension plan liability in the financial reports. So you can see on the far right, on the fund level statements, it has no impact. On the government-wide, you can see there the, at $182 million, that was a portion to Wayne Westland. And statewide, the underfunding is approximately $22 billion. So to allocate that to Wayne Westland, they took Wayne Westland's contributions to the Wimsters Plan divided by total contributions and a portion of that $22 billion to your So just a couple of items on GASB 68. So it's not expected to have any impact on the board's decision-making because historically, the fund-level financial statements have been used for those financial decisions. It is not expected that this, again, $182 million is going to have any impact on your required contributions into the Wimsters Plan because simply you pay what you're told to pay on a payroll dollar. You pay a percentage of each dollar paid to employees. This is not expected to have an impact on the bond ratings for districts. As the people that do the bond ratings are aware of this pronouncement. Nearly all Michigan districts that participate in Wimsters are expected to have a deficit in that position due to the size of this dollar amount. So again, units is a very small percentage. When you have $22 billion number, a small percentage could be a very big number that hits your financial statements. Lastly, even though the district does not have decision-making authority over the pension system, GASB 68 is required. So it's not only, this doesn't only impact Wayne Westland, it impacts every school in the state, as well as all schools throughout the country. Next slide looks at where the money came from this year. You can see the total revenue again was $101.7 million. The biggest item this year and every year is your state aid, which is based on that basic formula of your per pupil foundation allowance times your blended pupil count. And now the state dictates your per pupil foundation allowance each year. That really indicates that because that formula, that basic formula is essentially dictated by the state, school districts have a very little ability to significantly impact the revenues on a yearly basis. Next slide looks at what the money was spent on this year. And with districts being a service industry, the number one cost will always be people costs. And that's really illustrated here by 88% or $91 million of the total expenditures being paid on salaries and fringe benefits. So to this point, we've looked at the results as of June 30th, 2015. We wanted to provide some historical information just to give some context to those numbers that we've just been reviewing. This first graph gives a historical look at the per pupil foundation allowance. So as we just talked about a couple minutes ago, well over 80% of the district's revenue is driven by the state's per pupil foundation allowance. As you can see, beginning in 2011, 2012, there were some pretty significant cuts on a per pupil basis to that state aid funding, to the point now where at the end of 2014, 2015, you're receiving approximately $7,251 per pupil, which is a $706 or 9% reduction from the high of funding levels you had a few years ago of $7,957. So again, that creates a lot of financial stress on the district as they have to absorb these significant reductions in the state funding levels. Along this same trend, we take a look at enrollment data. So again, that per pupil, that foundation allowance that drives over 80% of the revenue is basically that per pupil funding times the enrollment. As you can see, for the last several years, enrollment has been declining in the district. This would certainly be consistent with what you would see across the state. Statewide, enrollment in K-12 public education is down approximately 11% in the last decade. So this is a trend that you see across the state. But it's important to note, if you take a look at your 2014 to 2015 enrollment numbers from 12,195 in '14 to 11,879 in 2015, again, that 316 student reduction, you know, each one of those represents $7,251 of state funding, which is no longer available. So again, on the revenue side, districts have been squeezed by both this combination of reductions and per pupil funding, and again, the statewide trend of less students. The result of that is really displayed on the next graph. This is the district's general fund balance as of the end of the year. Again, the general fund balance, we'll talk about a little bit more in a couple minutes, but it really represents the accumulated results of the past operations of the district. It's sometimes referred to as the rainy day fund. It's your accumulated savings, if you will. You can see, as you might expect when you see the reductions in funding that you've had to absorb, there's been a corresponding reduction in the general fund balance. Fortunately, the district has taken many steps through the administration, its employee groups. A lot has been undertaken here to stabilize that fund balance level to the point where it is now for the last few years, it is somewhat stabilized at the level you see there for the last few years. But obviously, the impact of the funding cuts we talked about had to be absorbed, and that's where you see these declines in the fund balance levels. So that brings us to, again, on this topic of fund balance, we just want to spend a minute, again, discussing why fund balance is important. Again, it represents that accumulated savings. It helps the district takes care of essentially your normal budget variances and also address financial surprises such as harsher-than-normal winters, those types of things, things that really you can't foresee throughout the year and you might have to deal with. And there's a lot of stresses that come into play when dealing with financial reporting and financial management of a school district. So again, your dependence on the state economy, as we talked about, the vast majority of the funding comes from the state. The state's obviously dependent on tax collections to fund that appropriation. So again, to the extent that there could be some bumps in the road on the state-level economy, that can have an impact on the funding that then is allocated to the districts. Future retirement system contributions. We talked a little bit about some of the changes in the pension reporting. Again, the state, at the state level, the pension's $22 billion underfunded. There's a lot of concern about what the state might have to do to deal with that and what impact that might have on local districts. Healthcare costs is always a concern. Elongated state aid payments. Again, we talked about how the funding comes from the state. The state doesn't even begin paying those payments till October of the following year. So the district has to essentially carry itself for several months on that accumulated savings before the state aid starts to kick in. And then again, future student counts. So again, a lot of pressures that districts have to deal with that fund balance helps So that brings us to a relative analysis of fund balance level. So a way that fund balance is typically analyzed is as a percentage of expenditures. So if we take a look at your $3.4 million of fund balance and compare that to your expenditures of roughly $103 million, that gives us about 3.64% or, excuse me, 3.31% at the end of 2015. The final numbers statewide are not yet available, but you can see how that compares to other districts across the state for the prior four years. Through about 2012, we were at or above the state average, and obviously, the funding cuts and enrollment declines have had a significant impact on that, where you can see now where we would compare to other districts across the state. And as another way of analysis, that fund balance level of about $3.4 million, that's enough funding to basically run the district for roughly six days. So it just helps give some perspective in terms of what that fund balance level represents. We'd be happy with that to answer any questions that the board might have, if there's any information we can provide.
Why don't we do a motion and then we can do questions and answers? I'd like a motion to approve.
I'd like a motion to approve, Mrs. Madison and, and Mrs. Walker. Anyone have a, a question or a comment at this time?
I just had a quick question with the early warning legislation, I am kind of concerned about that with the five percent and it being like the three point three one percent. What can we do to bring that up?
Well, that essentially gets to, like you said, there's, there's certain thresholds that the state has identified to determining whether a state falls into that range. So essentially, it's meeting that floor level of roughly five percent fund balance level. So essentially, um, that's really the, the, the mechanism the state has identified. So it's, it's just the, trying to get that fund balance level back up to that five percent level.
Anyone else have a comment or a question?
I appreciate all the hard work, excellent presentation, easy to go through, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, when you said that the funding situation put a little bit of stress on, on the, uh, on the district, uh, and how we operate. You can put an exclamation point at the end of that, that's certainly the truth. We see, uh, funding reduced because, as you said, class size is large. We see the, uh, school aid fund under attack, uh, from the legislature and the governor. Take money out of that to fill gaps in the general fund or for some other, uh, goal that they have in mind. We also see a number of pieces of legislation coming out of Lansing that, uh, reduce sales taxes. And that's a, that's a principal contributor to the school aid fund. So we're experiencing a lot of, um, in the way of attack. And yet, at the same time, we're keeping our heads above water. I noticed in the, uh, report, uh, the work that, uh, Mr. Larson Scheider and his, uh, staff did. That our, uh, revenues were within less than one half percent. And our expenditures were right around a quarter of a percent. Which to me seems like tremendous, uh, accounting for a budget that's over a hundred million dollars. So, uh, kudos to you and your staff. And thank you for your presentation and making this reasonably clear delignment. Would, does anyone else? Mrs. Madell?
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
I vote yes and Mr. Buckle.
I vote yes. The record show a six oh.
Now, I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work, appreciate it. Thank you, we appreciate the time this evening.
Thank you. Larson Scheider, uh. Item B?
Okay, thank you again, President Buckle. This is for bus leases, uh, you have information on pages twenty-two through twenty-four. Uh, just give you a little explanation about this request. Uh, each year, transportation's fleet is inspected by the state police for road worth- worthiness and safety. Due to our aging fleet, we had three buses that did not pass the two thousand and fifteen inspection. Uh, these buses were repaired and re-inspected prior to using them for transporting students. In addition, there are many other buses that continue to need ongoing repairs to ensure student safety. Uh, this is becoming an annual, uh, issue due to a majority of our fleet being purchased in nineteen ninety-nine. And early two thousands with bond proceeds, uh. Of course, it'd be preferable to purchase buses, but due to our financial condition, as you just saw in the audit. Uh, we are unable to buy buses at this time. Uh, additional bus leases are necessary at this time to provide safe and dependable transportation for Wayne Westland students. Uh, we currently have fourteen regular education buses that we lease. Uh, in the current school year, we have experienced issues with our safety, uh, our special education buses. Uh, our fleet is, uh, as an example, our fleet has three wheelchair-equipped buses. Uh, they're in need of air-conditioned repair. Uh, these buses typically transport medically fragile students that require stable temperature environments. Uh, we will need to re- repair or replace the air conditioning in these buses prior to spring two thousand and sixteen. Or when the weather gets warmer, air conditioning estimates are ten thousand dollars plus. And you would be doing that on fourteen and fifteen-year-old buses. Uh, recently, two of our buses broke down on the same route. Uh, fortunately, this was in the middle of the day, so the third bus, wheelchair bus, was sent to transport the students. If any of these buses were disabled during a before or after-school routes. Uh, in the winter, we would not have the ability to provide a spare wheelchair-equipped bus to transport the students. Uh, to provide, to provide transportation for extracurricular activities, transportation has done an excellent job. Uh, what they have to do is they double up runs going home at night, uh, to free up a bus in order to provide. A trip for football team, basketball team, whatever that might be. Uh, the problem is, this creates late runs for students going home and potential to upset parents and allow phone calls. Uh, additionally, being stretched by doubling up runs, we run the risk of a breakdown without spare buses. In case we have to go and pick students up. I reviewed my recommendation with the finance committee to lease four special education buses, two wheelchair-equipped and two thirty-passenger buses. And one thirty-eight passenger regular education bus. The two thirty-passenger buses will be used for our district's special education routes. Which will allow the current full-size buses to be used in district. Um, in case there's a breakdown, it would be safer for us to have a spare and able to pick up students. Uh, seventy-eight passenger bus will allow transportation to remove a current nineteen ninety-nine bus to be used as a backup. Or for extracurricular transportation. The total two thousand and fifteen, sixteen costs of the five additional buses totals seven, seventy thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, the district will receive state reimbursement seventy-two percent, uh, for the four special education buses. We will receive that in sixteen seventeen, uh, resulting in a future net annual cost of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, four of our current, I do want to warn you, of the fourteen buses that we currently have, four of those leases will expire in June thirty, two seven, two thousand and sixteen. At which time, we'll have to replace at least those four additional buses. Uh, leasing buses will provide safe transportation for our students in two thousand and fifteen. And provide us time to review our bus fleet for strategic planning or future planning. Thank you.
Like to have a motion to approve?
Move to approve, support.
Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Madison, uh, for support? Anyone have a question or a comment at this time?
I just had a couple of questions, just looking, um, during the long run, is it cheaper just to lease the buses than to pay for maintenance and repairs? Since the company would take over that, would it save us money in the long run just to, you know, lease them for a little while? Instead of buying new buses and after so many years paying for repairs after repairs?
Uh, leasing buses, you do, you have the warranty, you don't have to replace tires. Basically, all you have to do is oil changes, brake checks and that type of thing. So what this does is it frees up the mechanics to do the work on the other buses. We send a lot of our buses out, um, because we don't have time to do a transmission or replace an engine. So there's a combination of work outside the district and we have four mechanics that are working, you know, full-time.
And one last question too, with the decline of enrollment, because it's going down, 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 even though we're leasing. It seems like it eventually to kind of even out a little bit if we're losing students, because if we have buses that we're locked into that we can't really use, you know? So this is a pretty good idea, I really thought about this weekend, because I was concerned about this issue, but it's starting to really make a lot of sense.
Yeah, um, part of, our bus fleet won't go down that fast because we still have the same geographic area. So we still have to do all the runs, um. I guess intuitively you think if you reduce students, you might reduce runs, but they're still living in those neighborhoods, so. Unfortunately, we have, we have about eighty-five buses now.
Anyone else? Um, I noticed one thing on the, on our agendas tonight. The two Thomas thirty-passengers are listed as regular ed, and that's not the case, is it?
No, uh, actually, I listed those as regular ed because as I was going through, looking at, um, I took bids from the two, uh, bus companies that work for MSBO. Or provide the information. I had to signify those as regular ed, so I can keep track of which ones are, uh, you know, thirty-passenger regular ed and thirty-passenger special ed. Is actually a forty-seven passenger bus, but for special education purposes, it becomes a thirty-passenger bus. So in order to talk apples to apples, I had to list as regular ed.
But we will be having four special ed buses?
Yes.
And we'll be able to, uh, take advantage of the discount I'm for.
Yeah, uh, currently, we have, uh, several runs that go long distance, uh, the district, uh, for special education. And we essentially use a full-size bus for those, uh, routes. Now we'll be able to use a, um, a thirty-passenger bus, which will be smaller, uh, it's, you know, should, should, uh, you know, if we have four or five students on the bus. You don't need a seventy-eight passenger, I would like to keep those in district where it's, it's a little safer. Um, you know, you don't have that issue of breaking down twenty miles from the district.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Madell?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
I vote yes and Mr. Buckle.
I also vote yes, and let the record show a six oh vote. And if I'm not mistaken, that brings us to item one seven two point one six, student reinstatement resolution. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Education, we actually have two students to consider tonight. Uh, let me explain a little bit, a school district has to follow these guidelines when a petition for reinstatement is given to us. Student who has been permanently expelled from a school district may petition a, uh, school district after a hundred and fifty school days. Reinstatement committee is formed and includes an administrator, a teacher, a district parent, and two members of the Board of Education. For the purpose of re- reviewing the reinstatement petition. And any supporting documents and the findings of the district's hearing officer in the original hearing, uh, disposition. These steps have been followed and a committee's recommendation is to reinstate both students to John Glenn High School. We will need three things from the Board of Education tonight on each student. A motion to adopt the committee's recommendation, the resolution for each student read into the record, and a vote for each student.
Okay. I entertain then a motion for approval of, uh, student A one.
So moved.
I have Dr. Weaver and support by Mrs. Madison. Does anyone have a question related to student A one? Seeing none, Mrs. Madell?
Whereas the Board of Education for the Wayne Westland Community Schools convened on November ninth, two hu- two thousand and fifteen pursuant with Michigan case law. Three hundred eighty point one three one five, section five subsection F. To consider the petition for school reinstatement filed on behalf of expelled student A one. And to consider the report and recommendation of the reinstatement committee previously appointed by the Board of Education. Pursuant to Michigan case law, three hundred eighty, one, two, one, one, section five subsection D. Whereas the Board of Education is persuaded that student A one should be reinstated to the Wayne Westland Community Schools. Subject to the following terms and conditions. One, placement at John Glenn High School. Two, the student will conduct himself, herself at all times in strict conformity with the district's s- student code of conduct. Three, the parent and the student understand and agree that if the district's sole and exclusive discretion. The student violates the student code of conduct in any way, the district will immediately suspend the student. And initiate due process procedures to permanently expel the student from the district. Therefore, it is resolved that the reinstatement committee's report and recommendation be hereby adopted by the Board of Education. And that for the reasons stated herein, petition for school reinstatement filed on behalf of student A one. Is hereby granted subject to strict compliance with the terms and conditions set forth above. Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution will be provided to the student and parent. This has been moved by Dr. Weaver and supported by Mrs. Madison. Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
I vote yes and Mr. Buckle.
I vote yes, and let the record show a six oh vote. And reinstatement of student A two, um, are, are you good? I need a motion then to approve the committee recommendation?
Motion to accept.
Mrs. Madison is. I got to beg you, alright, Dr. Weaver?
Either way.
I know. And second by Mrs. Madison. And are these, uh, resolutions, uh, slightly different?
Only in the statement, student A one, student A two.
Is it possible for us to, to waive the reading of for student A two? Or do we need to go through that?
No, it's required to be read.
It's required, then we'll do this.
I'm sorry, stop the clock. Whereas the Board of Education for the Wayne Westland Community Schools convened on November ninth, tw- twenty fifteen pursuant to Michigan case law. Three hundred eighty point one three one one, section F subsection, I'm sorry, section five subsection F. To consider the petition for school reinstatement filed on behalf of expelled student two, A two. And to consider the report and recommendation of the reinstatement committee previously appointed by the Board of Education pursuant to Michigan case law. Three hundred eighty point one two one one, section five subsection, section D. Whereas the Board of Education is persuaded that student A two should be reinstated to the Wayne Westland Community Schools. Subject to the following terms and conditions. One, placed at John Glenn High School. Two, the student will conduct himself or herself at all times in strict conformity with the district's student code of conduct. Three, the parent and the student understand that and agree that if this district's sole and exclusive discretion. The student violates the student code of conduct in any way, the district will immediately suspend student. And initiate due process procedures to permanently expel the student from the district. Therefore, it is resolved that the reinstatement committee's report and the recommendation is hereby adopted by the, by the Board of Education. And that for the reasons stated herein, the petition for school reinstatement filed on behalf of student A two. Is hereby granted subject to strict compliance with the terms and conditions set forth above. Be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution will be provided to the student and the parent. It has been motioned by Dr. Weaver and second and supported by Mrs. Madison. Dr. Weaver?
Before you do that, did, um, I was a little bit remiss in asking for comments or questions on student A two? Thank you.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
I vote yes and Mr. Buckle.
I vote yes, and let the record show a six oh vote. Thank you, Mr. Albrecht, and, well, don't go away. Item one seven three point one six, approval of the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen Head Start continuation application. Albrecht?
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. President, members of Board of Education. Each year, it is a requirement that the governing board, in this case, our district's Board of Education. Approve the Head Start reauthorization, uh, grant and budget. You will find a letter from, uh, John Mills and Nancy Ealy on page twenty-five of your book. And supporting documentation and explanations on pages twenty-six and twenty-eight. Wayne Westland Schools acts as a delegate under Wayne County, who is a grantee for the Head Start programming in Wayne County. What we will need tonight is a motion to approve, uh, and a vote. And then to complete the process, assign copy of the documentation that our board has acted on this requirement.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
A move from, uh, Mrs. Madell and support from Mrs. Hines, Ms. Hines. Any discussion or questions at this time? Seeing none, uh, none, Mrs. Madell?
Mrs. Madison? Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
I vote yes and Mr. Buckaloo?
I also vote yes, and that gives us a six oh vote for the record. Thank you, Mr. Albrecht. Thank you. And that brings us to item one seven four point one six, Board of Education Committee Reports. Uh could we start, please, with the Finance Committee Report from Dr. Weaver?
Very well, thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, November third, two thousand fifteen. The following people attended. Michelle Harmala, Fred Weaver, Tom Buckaloo, David Callmire, Tony Spiezak, Gino Montane, and Jim Larson Scheidler. The following is the summary of that meeting. Jeff Higgins and Nathan Troyer from Plant Moran gave a summary of the two thousand fourteen fifteen audit and answered questions from the committee. Secondly, Jim Larson Scheidler discussed the need to lease more buses for this school year. Thirdly, Tony Spiezak reviewed the closeout of bid packet number two, Wildwood Geothermal Project. Overall, the project was under budget. Next, vacant property update. The process of the demolition of Vandenberg has started. Meetings are ongoing to investigate and plan for all of the district's vacant properties. Tony Spiezak presented and reviewed the fourteen fifteen Maintenance and Operations Department Annual Report that board members received in their packet on November fourth. Gino Montane presented and reviewed the fourteen fifteen Annual Energy Management Report that board members received in their packets on November fourth. Kevin Sutton, attorney from Lusk Albertson, reviewed the district's six thousand series policies via conference call. And that is the end of the report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. And how about a Policy Committee Report, Mrs. Madell?
Policy Procedures Strategic Planning Committee Meeting. This meeting was held on October twenty-eighth, twenty fifteen, beginning at six thirty P M and ending at seven fifty-four P M. Members present, Melanie Hines, Carol Madell, and Michelle Harmala, Superintendent. Presenter was Kevin Sutton from the front law firm of Lusk Albertson. Notes were taken by Michelle Ha- Harmala, Superintendent. Committee reviewed and provided feedback on the two thousand and nine thousand policy section. Feedback will be reviewed with Board of Education at a later date. The committee will convene at a future date to review the five thousand and the one thousand policy sections. Trustee Madell will share the committee's report at the November ninth, twenty fifteen Board of Education meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. That should bring us to item one seven five point one six, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Harmala.
Thank you, President Buckaloo. I'd like to first thank Deputy Superintendent James Larson Scheidler, Senior Executive Director of Business and Operations Dave Callmire, and all of our business services personnel for their hard work and their professional that professionalism that resulted in the financial reporting excellence, that excellence that you heard about tonight. So, congratulations to all of you and thank you for that. Legislatively, the Electric Choice Bill that you passed the resolution in regards to passed out of the House Energy Policy Committee, it will now be seen by the full house. This bill is the one that could negatively impact our position with the Michigan Schools Energy Cooperative, which allows us to save approximately four hundred thousand dollars annually on the purchase of our electricity. I am working with Representative Kozowski on this issue, and he just shared with me tonight that there is more work that he's going to do to try and make sure we can continue to keep our position in the cooperative. So, I'll keep you posted on that. John Silvery fa- facilitated a pilot run of our Strategic Planning Stakeholders Meeting with the Superintendent Steering Committee last week on Thursday. The committee's input will become not only a part of the strategic planning data, but we're going to be using it to revise the process, to ensure that our stakeholder sessions are as meaningful as possible. And I will be meeting with the core guiding team for our strategic planning later this week to review the feedback and the process and to develop our communications that'll go out to all of our staff and our community. And we are tremendously hopeful that as many community members and staff members will participate in this process as possible as everybody's voice and ideas will be very important in crafting our future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harmala. Item one seven six point one six, Citizens Comments, Non-Agenda Items. Uh Mrs. Madell? I see no. We'll move on then to uh review and recommendations, Board of Education. Miss Walker?
Yes, tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Uh Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Also like to congratulate the Business Department for your uh fine work in our budgeting and also uh the audit report. And also, uh congratulations to Cadet Willet. Uh Cadet, if you are watching this program, if you ever choose to uh retrieve your award, it's here sitting on this desk if you'd like to have it. That's all tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Madison?
No comment this evening.
Mrs. Hines?
I'd like to thank you guys again for excellence in our budgeting. I'm so proud of this district, you guys are on top of everything, and I just want to congratulate you all.
Thank you. Uh Mrs. Madell?
Monthly meeting, which means Head Start Report is in front of you as required by federal law. Please take a look at it. If you have any questions, please give the Business Department or Mrs. Ely a phone call and she will be glad to explain any uh questions that you have about that. Right now, the uh Head Start Program is fully enrolled, but that always changes on a daily basis knowing that a lot of our families are very mobile, uh in other words transient in our area, and so that there are always openings uh available for our students. And again, they are thrilled to death with their work, a play area. Uh they have several stations set up inside the fenced area for the students to enjoy. Uh got a chance to go to John Glenn Play, and I know some of you'd also got a chance. The students did a great job. It was an interactive play. If you didn't get a chance to attend, where the audience participated in the play itself. Don't forget Wayne Memorial's play is coming up on November nineteenth through the twenty-first at seven o'clock at night. They are putting on a performance of The Nutcracker. It is not of the ballet musical part. It is the actual play itself that they will be performing. Stuff the Bus is something we do every single year. It will be coming up before our next board meeting, so I wanted to mention it to everybody. It will be on November twenty-seventh and November twenty-eighth. They will be out and ready from seven o'clock in the morning until four o'clock in the late afternoon. There will be two locations this year. Usually, they are at uh at the Kmart location on Sherry Hill and Wayne Road. They will be there again this year, but they will also be at the Toys R Us area up by Westland Shopping Mall. In fact, I think it's across the street from Westland Shopping Mall. They will also be there, so they've split it into two different locations. Please come out and support uh our, our families at this time of the year. Thanksgiving Dinner Fundraiser will be this Thursday, November twelfth, beginning at eleven fifteen, next door at the Career Tech Center. Chef Tony will, and his students will be providing the food for this. It's always a great meal. And you need to get there early, get a good place in line, so that when they open the doors, you're ready to go. They're asking for a donation, I think, of ten dollars, and of course, they will always take more than ten dollars, so bring your checkbook. Uh also, this week is Veterans Day. Both of our high schools will be celebrating and commemorating our veterans. It'll be at eleven o'clock at the flagpole. This year, it promises to be nice weather, and we'll have an at Wayne High and also John Glenn. Please come out and join in the celebration of this great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Well, um I want to say thank you to Mrs. Griffin for bringing Bryce Fallows along this evening and getting us off to such a great start with a pledge. Add to Dr. Weaver's uh mentioning of uh John Willet, Cadet from uh Wayne Memorial, and for the fine work that he did at state competition. Especially thanks to Representative Kozowski and to Lowe's for the work that they did at Stottlemyre. Uh it's a playground, and that's a beautiful thing, but it's also another sign of the uh growing cooperation between the community and the school district. Uh we're, we're reaching a point where the school district can't, can't do it alone. We can't go alone any longer. We need the community's support. And we've seen that in a number of areas, and this project with Lowe's is just one more example of good things happening for Wayne Westland Schools and for our students. Uh congratulations again to Business Administration, it's been said already, but you received financial reporting excellence from both the ASBO and the GOFA. And uh it's not the first time, is it? Sixteenth year in a row that they've received this report uh for excellence, excuse me, award for report excellence. And uh that just about takes care of it from me. Um I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Mrs. Madison and Mrs. Walker. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.